Everybody ready? Anybody not ready? Eric, are you ready?
I think so.
All right, so I will call the Prairie County Budget Committee meeting to order and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's time for public comments, and I've got all these public comment slips in front of me.
Yeah. So...
I'm sorry, amendment and approval of the agenda.
Who approval?
Amendments, please.
I have no amendments.
None? Then a motion.
I'll move to approve the agenda. Second?
And all in favor, say yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, now public comments. I don't see any public comments. So we'll move right into the discussion items. And first off is a review of the Finance Department progress. I'm gonna start with that, Ted.
I think...
What's the best way to proceed?
We'd like a report from how we're doing on reconciliation. You can also just walk back and forth.
When you're done, you can drop the mic.
So I am on the sheriff's. Bank accounts and APN payroll are done through June. I'm working on June on the other four accounts. So we're making progress.
How far out are we to having those, that fiscal year done on our end?
I could probably have June done by tomorrow.
Okay, so we would have the beginning of this fiscal year would be, I mean...
Right. Yeah, I know the treasurer's been working on a lot of reconciling items for me and getting those caught up. Just...
So as we go forward through the... As we go forward, like over that last year, because there were a lot of bank adjustments. So are you having, are those starting to clear up as you go forward?
Yes. Yeah, there were several, there are several deposits, or I'm sorry, transfers from the road pool to cover APN payroll that had not been done in the bank. The journals have been done in the Cessell, but they had not been done in the bank. And those were just done in the bank the other day.
Okay. So the goal here is, you know, I talked to Elcod yesterday and we were talking about steps. You know, I kind of gave them an idea of where we would be with this. And so, you know, we proceed with the budgeting based on what we have right now. I think, you know, we're, now that we've got the new, well, not the new protocols, but the reinstated protocols basically in place at the direction of Elcod. I think that was in place for all of November, I want to say? Yeah, and so, so I feel like we, there is an end to this. There's gonna be some, you know, to finally get past this at the end of, you know, when we're dealing with that year, we'll probably have some write-offs, you know, just to finally adjust and move forward. But I feel like, I feel like November forward, so I kind of think we need to keep this up unabated until we're, until we're caught up.
Absolutely.
But in your estimation, I mean, is our beginning fund balance that we started this fiscal year with, is it going to be similar to what you're finding as your end balance in June? You don't know until you finish June?
I don't know. I don't know until we finish June. And until, I know the year-end process in finance, there was a lot of, by the finance director and by the assistant finance director who are no longer here, there was a lot of truing up at the end of the year to make sure that the ending fund balances are correct. So I don't know how we're going to do that.
The way we're gonna do that, the first step is that you and Aida and Melissa and I have a call with Kena from Elcod tomorrow afternoon. And she's gonna be directing us on getting an extension on our audit and also, also next steps in how everybody's supposed to be proceeding. Because recall, the goal here is not to reinstitute a system that wasn't effective. The goal is to start, is to, is to have a mechanism in place where we're able to draw on outside resources and have a more effective and accurate product and so that we don't ever have this happen again. Also, it'll, I mean, having, having outside kind of oversight will make it easier to raise the alarms, I think, if something like that does happen. But the other thing that I just want to say, you know, I've heard, I was reading some, some things about me on the internet the other night and...
You shouldn't do that. You shouldn't do that.
Were you bored that night?
No, I just had people sending them to me. And, and you know, so everybody's aware here, we're, we're making changes to, to the fundamental, you know, the historical structure of a lot of these departments. Because funding for government, local and all the way up, is not, there's not gonna be more funding. You know, I mean, that's not a thing to bet on. So we need to be more efficient, and that's what we're doing here. We're combining where we can and we're getting, we're getting people that will be able to oversee more than one department, if that makes sense. And, and I mean, it's not, it's not, I, I'm not here to cut services. We're here to actually just deliver them in an efficient manner. And that's what, that's what we're doing. And I did see, they were proposing that they re-named the county Fitzgerald County. I am for that. But, but I really think that I won't be here that long. So it's probably, you know, I'm here to set these things up and get, and get a system in place that's gonna be, that's gonna be more sustaining than the one that we had. Because when, you know, when, when, about this time last year, there was, there was a lot of, a lot of vacuum, a lot of chaos, and, and we need to make sure that that doesn't happen again. And I think we're well on the way to doing that. And I mean, everybody, everybody here is, I'm really happy with everything, the way everything's working out. So I just think that, that we just sort of have to keep on with this, you know, continue to torture Julie until we're caught all the way up.
Please, thank you.
Right? And we're making it work.
We'll leave a town after you, not the county. Yeah, it's something in your name.
Go ahead, Dave.
So on the extension, we're currently in an extension, is that correct?
No. So the, as far as the audit, is what they're talking about, the extension?
Right.
Audit is supposed to be done by December 31st. They haven't begun, they haven't begun field work with us yet.
Right, okay.
So that's getting the extension on getting our audit to the state. So this is for the fiscal year that just ended, June 23.
Right, so this is the 2223 fiscal year. And so typically, when you send that to audit, how long does that take to receive it back?
I don't know. It's done online, the request for extension is done online. And I, I have not done it myself before, so I don't know how long that process takes.
So the audit process, also it depends on, and what a lot of, what a lot of jurisdictions are experiencing, you know, not just counties, but counties in general, including Lane County and others. There's a real backlog, there's a limited number of actual auditing firms in the state that can, that can do the audit, so everybody's backed up. In fact, in fact, you know, Elcod was, was doing an extension themselves just because they, their auditors are too backed up, so...
And I understand the extension, what I'm looking at is going forward and starting this next fiscal year with some good numbers.
Right.
So, which means we would have to go retroactively back to last year and see what our beginning balance was to see where we are.
Correct.
So if we're gonna request an extension, depending on how long that extension is, just for instance, say it's three months, then would we have the opportunity, or is it feasible, that we would have the completed audit back by the time we start our budget process in May?
That's doubtful, since the auditors haven't even been here to do any field work yet.
Okay. So we would be starting this budget season again?
Yeah.
Without real numbers?
Well, and, no, well...
We have better numbers.
Yeah, no, our numbers will be good. The, in the reality, the auditors, correct me if I'm wrong, but from what I understand, mostly, the auditors are generally just evaluating the processes, not necessarily your numbers. So they're making sure that you're following the correct procedures, you know, when you're purchasing required procedures and, and, you know, banking procedures and things of that nature. As opposed, I mean, they're not necessarily looking at every single expenditure and how those are filed in each GL, right? Is that...
Right, they're not, they're not looking to that, that detail.
They're just not forensic on that level.
Right, but they're, but then they're creating our financial statement, our audited financial statement for the year.
And, and that's more what I was concerned about was the, you know, the auditing process and what it has involved. Previously, we're said, we're shortfalls or deficiencies in the processes or procedures. And have those been corrected for the most part?
So, so I was on the call with Elcod yesterday, and that's one of the things, one of the services that Elcod is providing us, and I'll use a credit card policy as an example, right? And it's, it's taking a look at that policy and then giving us some direction about better ways to manage that policy and implement that policy that are consistent with state mandates and state regulations and that kind of thing. Elcod has been extremely helpful there, so the answer to the question is yeah.
And we're gonna, but I'll just, the rest of that phone call was, we should have updated policies and procedures to review from Elcod, not the ones, not the changes that we just made as the stopgap to avoid losing federal funds, but we should have those, I think she said in a couple of days, she's almost finished with them.
Yeah.
And then we'll review them and have to look at what we want to adopt and what we don't want to adopt. And I, you know, it's interesting as we go forward because, because a lot, there are, you know, these are, these are policies that apply to every department and different departments have different historical activities that have been accepted. But we'll have to look at each one of these and think about it. But really, we want to establish a scenario that's, that keeps us fiscally protected going forward. And that's, that's the side that I would like to err on.
And I think the, I think the goal that we can control is ensuring that by budget season start, we are, we are current in reconciliation that month, right? So then we have the closest numbers we're gonna get. And I believe that it's pretty normal to go into budget season without having your financial audit completed. You usually get your financial audit after the fiscal season started, and then if there's major issues or changes, you have to do some kind of a supplemental at that point to make for adjustments. But I've never seen that happen. So I think as long as we have current reconciliation to that month that we start budget, I think that's gonna be our best case to do. We can control that.
Yeah. That's the key, and that's how we manage it. But the policies, the procedures, the protocols are what's gonna prevent this from happening again. So, yeah, Elcod and the conversation yesterday was really refreshing to hear. She definitely had a positive attitude and it sounds like things are probably gonna happen a little bit more quickly now.
Because we originally gave them a deadline by February.
Yeah.
They're coming in two months ahead of time to give us a chance to look at it, that's pretty good.
That's, I think that was the deadline, to have the new Cessell process in place.
Oh, different, yes, different.
And that's part of tomorrow, what you guys will be working on is the Cessell process. And that's the phone call tomorrow as well.
Okay.
Any more questions for Julie while she's up there?
Well, thank you. I know you've been, I know this has been the primary...
It has. It's like, it's like every, every moment that I have that I'm not doing payroll or something related to that, I'm in the bank recs, I'm, you know...
I did see her at the Rogue Outdoors tour the other day. That's completely accurate.
We weren't supposed to tell anyone, and you were there too.
I know.
And then we talked business in the parking lot, so...
What's Kevin getting for a question? Well, thank you.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Julie.
All right, we'll move on to the question. Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, David Barnes, Treasurer. I just want to let you know, I got behind on things. And it was part my fault, part Elcod, part the crash that we had. But Nick came on a few months ago, and Nick has been doing an amazing job for us. He is keeping us up to date on things that we're doing right now. So as we discussed yesterday in the electeds meeting, I am getting caught, I'm working with Julie to get things caught up, and Nick is keeping things on track going forward. So this will not happen where we are this far behind again. We're, as of right now, we're staying caught up on day-to-day, and it's just a matter of getting caught up on the old stuff. But we have, I think, June, and then, when did you start?
Middle of September.
So starting, we have...
So theoretically, October as well is, so yeah, we're pretty close.
Theoretically, October is gonna reconcile out with no issues. September should also, so we only have a couple more months of backlog on reconciliation until we're caught up with present. So that should give you some level of comfort or whatever, so... And to what you said about what the auditors audit, they do request from the treasurer's office several, last year I think it was 20 or 25 different transactions that happened. They tend to be the larger ones, the ARP money, the LATCF money. They want to see how it's come in, how it was booked in, where and when, things like that. So we do get several requests from them for financial information every year. So they do, they are looking at, and then there's other things they, what they do is called a random sampling. And they'll just pluck things out, I used to do this when I was an auditor. You take the biggest ones and then you take a random sampling, smaller ones, just that, you know, there's a method to doing it. And that's what you use to gauge the accuracy of your financial reporting. So...
Thanks, Dave. All right, moving forward to discussion, item B, Department Budget Revisions.
So we don't have, the only one that we have specifically to look at right now is the Fair Supplemental Budget. And...
Are there more of them? Because Nick doesn't have one.
Oh.
I can go grab one.
There's another one on my desk if you...
Thank you.
So, so the Fair provided a supplemental budget. They have, they, they had some, some changes in the way that, in the way that some of their revenue came in, and a, and kind of a bump in revenue. And tell me if I'm, if I'm misstating this. But, but they were, for example, the TLT money, which is from City of Gold Beach, was, was given to them normally with, the way that I understand it has been handled in the past is, is that City of Gold Beach would basically administer projects and so forth, do the entire thing through the City of Gold Beach and maintain control of those funds, I'm pretty sure. But, but in this case, they have now given the money directly to the Fair, so the Fair was able to, that, and as I recall, the City of Gold Beach TLT funds are, the language that determines their use, that's for, I want to say, maintenance, isn't that?
I don't remember.
I can't remember.
That's how I've always understood it, there's a 1% on top of the 7% city tax specifically for like deferred maintenance and maintenance.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's, I seem to have read that somewhere. So, so anyway, that, that money came in here and, and then, and then we also had, they had a substantial amount of money, about $300,000 from, from rent for the fairgrounds, mostly for the, for the fire. And so, over the last year or two, they have been, they've been paying for basic, you know, like utilities and so forth and normal operating costs out. I think they were, they were paying those out of, out of TLT funds from the county, from that, from that account. Is that, is that correct?
That was correct, yes.
And so...
I'm not gonna move, you keep looking at me.
He's looking behind you.
So, so what we're, what we need to do here is we need to go through that and make sure that everything's actually, because we'd like to go back and clean that up and get it, get it correctly allocated. And, and then the Fair has, basically what they've admitted here is, you know, numbers, you'll see the existing budget, there was almost, for materials and services, there was nothing budgeted except for an operating contingency. And then, then budget change implements the total of $640,157 into additional salaries and also, or actually salaries and so forth that increased some. I think they hired one new person, that's a maintenance person. And, and then they got, then they allocated this through to various items within, you know, as far as materials and services, and I see we've got, we've got, you know, livestock pavilion has $100,000, arena restrooms or arena $100,000. It is kind of, I, I would be interested, I kind of wanna, I feel like there might be a better way to allocate that so that you have more flexibility as you go forward, because I'm not sure how hard those numbers are and where you, where you got them from. Jay had talked about this yesterday, what were you suggesting that might be a better approach for that?
Well, so like I understand when you get, when you transfer money in, you have to identify and identify where that money is going to be spent. And a lot of times, it just ends up in a carryover because, you know, you allocate it to an area. So I would suggest that you, that you either just identify capital outlay and put that money in capital outlay, and then as building needs, whatever happens, then you pull from that GL number. You don't have to specify what building it is in terms of that. Or, or you just identify contracted services, repair and maintenance, but you don't have to, you don't have to, to itemize it down to the building itself. That should be part of what your, your budgeted master plan looks like, but your overall GL adhere doesn't require that level of specificity. Because, I mean, I'm sure if you get a contractor out and they're gonna be working on separate buildings, you're not gonna want to have an itemized bill from that contract for the work they did on each separate building.
They don't have the GL lines for capital outlay?
It's down in the bottom.
Maybe it's 700?
It's, yeah, under, under materials and services at the very bottom.
No, down at the bottom.
Yeah, so, I mean, I would just, I think that's a little more, you know, appropriate than trying to identify arbitrary numbers for buildings just to make sure that your budget is...
So just in like the building improvement one?
Yeah, exactly. Because that's what you're allocating it for, you know, so...
So you're suggesting then that she would take all of the R and M for all of those and put those just under the capital outlay?
Correct.
Because then it can go where it needs to go.
Yeah.
And it can just go accurately where, where, you know, we actually use it, then we're not, then you don't have to go back and clean it up again later.
Right.
Chris, what are your thoughts on that?
I like the thought of it, I just didn't realize that was a option. It's my first plan with a budget.
Yeah. And any help you need with the budget and stuff, like, you know, come, come with us, come get with the Finance Department, we can help with all of that.
And just so everybody knows, yesterday we did have a meeting with Chris also. And we had Raviya Natasha and we had Aida there. We discussed a number of things, but, including some training and some other stuff that Chris will be made available too. So I think we got a really good plan moving forward with that. And, yeah, that was very productive as well.
And that's, that's all, go ahead.
The only other one that I thought we may want to look at discussing is the code enforcement. Because, so we, we started the year with code enforcement as a department. We disbanded it, reallocated it, but we haven't, we haven't essentially made budget adjustments. It all is still sitting in that same budget fund. So ensuring that we have a GL number for that allocated over into the sheriff's office for...
Break it up into the three different, okay.
Yeah, and I think, then we can, then, you know, we can kind of move forward with that.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah.
Will I take a supplemental? It would take a supplemental probably because of the, I don't, I don't know, I don't know the part, I don't know the...
It will take a supplemental.
Yeah, it will.
Because, yeah, it'll be a supplemental into those budgets.
Yeah, nice to be moving the money there.
It'll just be a supplemental into the sheriff's budget, into building planning.
But it won't have to go before the Budget Committee because we're not changing amounts.
No.
Okay, we can do that.
The amounts remain the same, they just move into, under a different umbrella.
Correct.
And, you know, just, Ted mentioned this, there were some social media warrior comments that have also been sent to me about different department heads no longer here, that kind of thing. I mean, obviously, we are not gonna talk about any personnel or employee issues. But one, one thing to notice, or that the public, maybe they haven't noticed, is we did use an efficiency expert that came through the various departments to offer suggestions. And our total number of county employees right now is down from what it was a year ago. I don't have those exact numbers, but, but it was down and we're actually providing, if not the same, more service, so... And that's been, in, in the beginning of the year, we had discussions about reorganization to be more efficient with less. And, and I think we're definitely moving in that direction. And when we can definitely improve on it, we're, we're making progress for sure.
But what would that look like now? I, I hear you, but I...
It just would mean that, you know, you know, an occasional review or, you know, some, you know, every year budget to bring in an efficiency expert, something like that, to be able to evaluate whether or not you are still current with the policies that you are implementing at that time.
A fidelity check.
Yeah, fidelity.
Efficiency of policies.
Yes, efficiency of policies.
Yeah. You know, we need to rotate all those policies, not just financial, but all of them really.
Yeah, because we've become out of date on a lot of them.
So many, yeah, so many.
Or they weren't being utilized.
Yep.
We hadn't updated financial policies since 2002.
That's my, my point exactly.
And, and we've just sort of gone away from, you know, unfortunately, I mean, or fortunately, that's really what, what needs to be done. You need to sit down and talk with everybody, department heads, need to be aware of the policies. And then they need to communicate it to the employees and then, you know, once everybody knows what the rules are, that's great. And, but when you haven't looked at them since 2002, in some cases, it's easy to have gotten off track.
Well, I know you talked about this at the last meeting too, but, you know, providing the training because you do have new employees all the time, and so providing the training and making sure that they are aware of and conscious of those policies is important.
Yeah, one of the ways, you know, that we can, that we can help lead the charge, I think, is something of that nature, is a lot of times, you get asked a lot of questions. You get asked questions about, you know, well, I mean, a great one was Ms. Brozzi just asked, right? You know, and a good way to answer a lot of times is, what does the policy say?
Yeah.
And start teaching people to go back to actually look at the policies so that we start, instead of just, you know, going off of basic suggestion, you know? It's a good way to keep a tab on what the, it's a good, it's a good habit to get into.
The other, the other thing that I just wanted to kind of remind and share with this committee is the cyber attack. So last week, I became aware of some suspicious activity. And immediately called Phil, our IT expert, and it was a Saturday, and he came down here and started looking into things. And we actually had additional attempts made to, to breach our system again, so... But our, Phil's mechanisms that he has in place for cybersecurity worked. And this, the, the system worked well actually. But that's a constant... But that's a constant and ongoing threat that we face all the time. And, you know, those, those bills are still periodically coming in, and, and, I mean, that's just, we have to fund that, to, we have to stay on top, there is no, no option, we can't go through that again. So it's just one of the, one of the new things that this county faces financially. Any more, any more discussion on Department Budget Revisions, anybody? And why don't we talk now about, where do we go from here, what's next? What, do we, when do we reconvene, what would be most effective? Kind of hard to say, it sounds like it's going to be relatively soon, Dave.
Hope so.
It just depends on the reconciliation, right?
It does, once we have those numbers.
I think if we shot for mid-February, that'll give us a really good idea prepping for May and what that's going to look like. There's a few, you know, we have a couple of things that are up in the air that are happening between them, but I think we should have some good policies in place, we should be discuss, we'd be able to discuss the CASL thing, and we should be reconciled to date at that point, so, you know.
We should be able, yeah, with the new CASL, with the new modules and everything, that should all be in place. Our goal is to have that in place by mid-February, and so I think that's a great idea, that let's just do that. And in the meantime, we're going to try to get as much training as, as we can in the, you know, for those issues earlier than that, so. The sooner we can get those new modules in and get them, get them implemented, the better we're going to be.
Because we, when do we hand out the, when do we hand out the budgets to the department that has to start preparing their budgets? Is it, is it March?
I think, yeah, it's always been February, March, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah.
Plenty of time, yeah.
So if we're in that range, I think it'd be good.
Yeah.
I think we should meet before those books come out, so, yeah, February. I think we got them last year in April.
I can't remember either.
It was, because it was like right before the cyber attack, because everybody was in the middle of preparing them and lost all that data.
Right. One of the things I want to mention about policy and procedures, that once we go, once everybody adopts CASL, that's going to be the building block from which all of our policy, our new policies come from, you know. So anything that we do before we get the CASL modules up and open, I really think would be premature on our parts, and is probably going to have to be redone, because enabling the CASL, putting everybody into CASL is really going to change the way that everybody does their reporting and, and their record keeping, essentially. So, you know, we're going to have to create a new set of policies that come out of what we learned and what we're able to do inside CASL, so.
I don't know if that's going to necessarily be the case on a big scale, because ElCog is all, is, ElCog's helping us with the CASL implementation, but ElCog is also helping us with the policy implementation.
Okay, so they already, they already have the basics, they have the ABCs already. We just have to, we're going to have to add our own little sub kind of titles underneath it for particulars for Curry County, so, okay, good, you know, I just, I was thinking about it, having to rewrite from square one again, having to rewrite policies to deal with CASL, so. It works out much better, thank you.
So how about looking at, at the calendar, how about February 20th, that's a Tuesday? It's the third week of February.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody?
11 o'clock, yeah.
Yeah, 11 o'clock.
Tuesday?
Tuesday the 20th, February 20th. About 11 AM.
Dave, you going to be around?
I have a potential, like, I'm, I'm helping open the, yeah, in the month of February, but that's, I could, I could do a call-in again. But both the month, month of February and March, I'm helping consult, opening this franchise.
It'll work, it'll work.
Calling in, good.
What's the weather there right now, Dave, in old Fiji?
Well, unfortunately, we, we did not, we, our Fiji trip, so it's, we're, it's bold.
He had to cancel his Fiji trip.
It's not where he is.
Okay.
But so he's, he's, he's skiing.
Yeah.
All right.
Perfect ski, it's okay.
All right.
Be careful.
Bold, probably relatively, yeah.
Okay. If I could go back and never have skied, I would.
Close the comments, Nick?
Um, no, I guess the only thing I would say is, as we get that year-end reconciliation, and be on the table to meet earlier if there is a large difference between what we started our budget for this year to what they come up with, but otherwise, February seems good.
Okay.
I was going to say the exact same thing, so keep up the good work and hopefully we'll get there.
All right. Jay, anything? All right, that's all I have, 11:38, we'll close this meeting now, thank you.